Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Tonight is the April 12th, 2018 Town Board Work Session. Could we all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a couple announcements before we begin. Good evening. Well, I think spring's here, right? Maybe. And tomorrow. Just a couple announcements. We have the road improvement project down on Robinson Lane and Route 376. It's moving forward. The DOT said in the next coming weeks they will be doing curbing and blacktopping on the north side and then repeating the process on the south side. They're targeting to be off the road with that both sides by the end of August. And then they will do other improvements like the landscaping and the seeding and everything else. So that's ahead of schedule, which is nice to hear. The EPA Waterline also has begun. They've been doing some work down Route 82 and 376. They've been cutting trees. People have probably seen that. And they're clearing the pad site for the water tank up in Little Switzerland. Soon they'll be putting pipe in the ground down Route 82. And as quick as we can, whatever road closures or traffic delays that we anticipate, we will put them on our website, on our Channel 22, on our Facebook pages. Bless you. And whatever else we can do to get the public informed about that. Whirlie Homes, status on that is we are finalizing the route for the project down Vicki and Tina Lanes. You've probably seen some surveyors out there doing that. We're still waiting on some information from the water company. We haven't finished that yet, but once they give us some of the information, then we'll be able to finish up the map plan and report. And then we can go forward with the purchase and then the project. Also, just so everybody knows, I'll be having a meeting with the DEC and all our professionals, including Stephen Gruber, who he was the grant administrator for the DEC grant that we got in Hillside Lake. It will be on April 25th at the DEC offices in New Paltz. And I thank Senator Sue Serino's office for helping me, assisting me with that. Sometimes it's hard to get a good contact, and they were very helpful. So, thank you, Senator Serino. Hometown hero banners. People have been asking about them. Usually we put them on the poles around Memorial Day. So keep an eye out for that. If you have any questions, please call the Town Hall or Councilman Frank or myself if you're interested in doing additional ones. Some people have been asking, and we have the application online, and I have them in my office. So 221-4303 is my office, and you can call there. We could get it to you. Brush drop-off. We had an emergency brush drop-off because of all the storms in March, and it was very successful. It was only two weeks because we have limited resources and we couldn't afford to do it for the full month, but the two weeks that we did it, we had over 520 loads. And that was more than the whole month of June that we had. So obviously, people had a lot of brush because of the storms. And we'll be looking to do, I believe we have to do RFPs soon for June and October brush drops-off, so I'll be asking the board about that maybe this month. Arbor Day is coming up. We have a celebration on April 28th. It's at Julie's Jungle this year. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. And this year, we are joining in the County Executives Think Differently Initiative. And we're calling it Plant Differently. So they'll be having a arborist and all sorts of other assistants at Julie's Jungle. We're going to do a tree planting lesson, and the Girl Scout troop is going to be helping us there. So please come out there for that. We'll be advertising that on Channel 22 and the website, so please look for that. Again, it's at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, April 28th at Julie's Jungle. And that's all I have for some announcements. So with that, I'll open up the work session. Our first discussion will be the Carroll Drive Bridge Project. The engineer's going to give us an overview about that and what to expect. And Scott?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you.
I'll just preface this by saying, a few years ago, former supervisor Hickman had engaged the town to participate in a hazard mitigation program, if you may recall. I believe we got a grant even to participate in that. And what that is, it identifies hazards throughout the town. It could be bridges, it could be municipal structures and floodplains, et cetera, to get listed, you know, and make it official and record it with the federal government so that at some point, we might be eligible for funds to help mitigate any potential disaster or damages that may result from storms. So this project is actually fruition of that, as this bridge was listed on that hazard mitigation plan. So I'll just move forward here a little bit to the next slide. Tonight, we're trying to mouse instead of the keypad. So the Carroll Drive Bridge is located, obviously, on Carroll Drive. It spans the Fishkill Creek. It was last reconstructed in 1987. It's a timber pile structure. It services 69 homes, 30 mile an hour speed limit. It's a three-span structure, so it has pilings in the creek itself. It's approximately 65 feet long, 24 feet wide. The last major repair was in 2007, I'm sorry, to the abutments. We had an analysis done by Hudson Valley Engineering a few years ago to take a look at what we thought a safe load limit was on that structure, and that came up at 22 tons. It is susceptible to damage by debris flowing down the Fishkill Creek. I'm going to get to what the structure looks like in a second. Bear with me. So obviously, we want to get any part of the substructure out of the creek and beyond the banks. It is listed in the town's hazard mitigation plan. Fortunately, we received a federal grant for 80% of the project cost. We may be able to receive an additional grant of 15%. We automatically get submitted by the state to this additional grant program, so we're waiting to see whether we get that additional 15%. And this is just a few excerpts from the hazard mitigation plan. There's the first picture of the bridge. We'll show more as we go on. But as you can see, it just identifies the hazard risk and the different deficiencies and so on. So this is just an excerpt from our previously approved hazard mitigation plan. This basically is when we were notified that, on March 19th, that we were basically granted the grant. There had to be a formal vote in Poughkeepsie by the Transportation Corp., which was successful. And that puts us on the list and really made this project official that we were going to get the grant. This is the DOT IPP, basically sheet that works up the cost, little timeline, and again just demonstrates that this project is on the list and it's moving forward. This project has to be constructed in accordance with DOT guidelines. Even though it's a town structure, the federal program says that the municipalities have to follow DOT regulations. So we'll be working with DOT in terms of getting approvals for the final design of the structure. And as you can see here, this is New York State DOT tip list, and the structure is identified here with a total cost of approximately $1.5 million. So Carroll Drive Bridge is obviously on Carroll Drive, which is off of, I would say, Beekman Road. Martin Road kind of can, you can cut through on Martin as well. This is the boundary of the, all the parcels that are serviced by the Carroll Drive Bridge. As we said earlier, it was 69 homes, and this is the only means in and out of that neighborhood. This is a little video here to kind of give you a little idea of the structure and the As you can see, it's a timber structure, timber rail, timber pilings in the creek. As we go on, you'll get a little better picture from underneath. Here's another view. As you can see, the pilings are right barely in the center of the creek there, two sets of pilings. So if a tree or a large number of trees were to get jammed up behind those piles, it would create a dam behind the bridge. And in theory, you know, it could potentially wash the bridge out or force the water around the bridge and erode on either side of the bridge. So that's why, a big part of the reason why we were able to get this grant, to remove that.
Is that the only, is that the only way out?
Yes. So this kind of shows you, you know, it's kind of spliced together. There's a pile. I don't think my pointer's working here, but you can see the joint. Hopefully, you can see that joint right above the pile. So, I mean, if you get tree and you get a lot of water behind it, you could see it could be easily, you know, dislodged and, you know, lead to failure, that structure. They don't build them like this anymore.
Not in a good way.
Not in a good way. They don't build them like this anymore. And that's an abutment. You can see the piles, and this is the repair where they did concrete along the bottom of those piles because they were getting erosion. You know, the creek was eroding behind the piles, and they poured concrete in 2007 to help support the structure. This is just a little bit of debris, but as you can see, you know, in a storm with trees falling into the creek and washing downstream, it can get trapped by the structure instead of allowing it to pass through, and that's the problem. So the existing bridge is three simple spans with the pilings in the Fishkill Creek itself. The proposed span, the structure's going to be a little bit longer. We're going to go from about 65 feet to about 85 feet. We're proposing to go with pre-stress concrete beams across the entire span with new concrete abutments on either side, which will rest on steel piling to either bedrock or friction piles. But we'll have to wait until we get into the geotechnical design and investigation to do a final design on what that's going to look like. So what we have envisioned is to replace the bridge in two halves. Initially, we were looking at trying to put a bridge just to the side of it, a temporary structure, and removing this bridge in one shot, putting and replacing it in one shot. The problem is, we just don't have enough right-of-way. And in the federal program, once you get into right-of-way acquisition, there's a lot of a time and a lot of expense added to the project. So we think there's just enough room that whether we may saw-cut the bridge longitudinally and remove a portion of it, or better yet, we may just remove the rail on one side and put the new structure just above the existing structure by a couple of feet. And if we do that, then we move this traffic onto the new half of the structure, we remove the bridge from underneath, and then we build the second half of the structure, similar to what was just done recently on Palin Road. So bottom line is, it would be a phased construction, one half at a time, and it would run through approximately two construction seasons or a season and a half. We have to put out an RFP for a design consultant. We're working on that now. Hopefully, in July, we'll ask the board to make that award to a design consultant. They'll be working on preliminary design. Seeker, there's the C permits to obtain DOT approvals, working towards a final design by basically, it looks like, summer of 19. It's, you know, a bit of a process to put this together. We're looking to hopefully start construction, make the award January of 20th, but there'll be shop drawings and a lot of paperwork and submissions to prepare to actually start the work, hopefully in April of 2020. And then we would do basically one half, one year, get traffic flipped over onto the new portion of the bridge. During the winter months, they could do the demolition, drive the piles for the next phase, and come springtime, you know, get into the concrete portion of the final phase. So this is our preliminary schedule, and that's the end. If any board members have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Does the grant include the entire project?
80%.
And how much is it?
Approximately $1.5 million.
So...
So we're looking a little less than $300,000. That's our...
So the town will be responsible for about $300,000?
Up to $300,000, but up to three-quarters of that, or $225,000 may be covered by a secondary grant. We're waiting to hear on that. Now would be good news if that happens.
That would be very good news. So tops, it would cost the town $75,000, maybe?
In that scenario.
In the scenario, right. Best-case scenario. Well, regardless, whether we get that 15% or not, it's great that we got the 80% grant because obviously, it's needed.
Yes. And again, you know, it's being on that hazard mitigation plan that made us eligible for this grant, and, you know, that we do have other projects that have been identified. This is the most significant one, but, you know, hopefully, this is, there'll be more to come, you know, different projects we can do.
Yeah, I'm thankful to Supervisor Hickman for starting the hazard mitigation plan because this is the fruits of it now.
This is the fruits of it, yes.
When I first took office, I called him, and one of the things on my list was Carroll Drive Bridge and with the Dutchess County Transportation Safety Council. And I asked him some questions. What do I have to do with that? And he gave me a little background to it, and I said, "Well, when do we vote?" And he goes, "Well, I don't know." He goes, "For 12 years, I never received anything from, on the tip," which is the Transportation Improvement Program. So this was the first one that we received. He got nothing.
For 12 years, you got nothing.
With luck of the draw, but I thank Supervisor Hickman for all his work with that.
It's a good project, and it has merit, you know?
Right, absolutely.
And it'll definitely be an improvement.
Right. So our highway superintendent gets a new bridge, too?
Gets a new bridge.
Gets a new bridge. Okay. Any questions?
Is this wider than the existing bridge significantly, or...?
Yeah, they will be slightly wider to have shoulders because the DOT requirement is that you have shoulders on the bridge. They were pushing actually for sidewalks, but we just don't really have enough right-of-way, and it increases the budget, and we're already, you know, so. But we will have some wider shoulders.
And it's for greater capacity as well.
It'll be a full HS25 loading, yeah. Right now, we're limited to 22 tons.
There was something you added. You wanted to make sure that they did, that we were...
Well, when we first started the project, I didn't realize that we had to follow DOT guidelines because, you know, we're just a municipality of town. And the DOT guideline is, is that for any structure that spans a creek or a water body, it must be on pilings. So even though I don't think we really need pilings, in my opinion, or it could be designed without pilings, the DOT manual says, "No discussion, you have to have pilings." So we added that to the project cost.
Oh, okay.
And it was only once we had the award or had the grant that we started getting into the more details of it that that surfaced, that detail surfaced.
Right.
But they did make the adjustment, so we're fine.
Very good.
I mean, that's the estimate. So when we really get the bids in, we'll know what are...
That's when we really know. We are seeing an increase in pricing on, you know, our water projects, and, you know, we are seeing an increase. So we'll see when the bids come out.
So we have to do all the work, the preliminary, put the RFPs out?
Well, we'll put out the RFPs, and I'll oversee the consultant firm. You know, we have our basic concept that we want to go with, and then they'll do all the actual design for the structure.
So in the grant, does it recoup us for the dollars that we spend?
Well, it can be like-kind services. So for our participation, you know, my time or planner's time with Seeker, that'll all count towards it.
That will go towards the 15%, right? Okay, very good.
Yes.
Are we allowed to do a design-build for this to speed the process along?
There is probably the potential for a design-build.
Do we have staff for that?
There are pros and cons to that. We may, we may look into that, but, you know, typically, in this program, DOT wants you to pick a consultant. And then, you know, there's a certain, you know, program, so we'd have to kind of ask, I guess, for a waiver for that and do a design-build. But it's a smaller job, and there are a couple smaller bridge companies that really don't have engineering staff that, you know, if it was a bigger job, like the Tap and Z, it's a design-build, or a $20 million job, it's a design-build, but this is really a small bridge job.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so we'll give more information as we go along. I'm going to have to put out the RFP, and then we'll have to do a ban, correct?
This will be a reimbursement.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I would recommend that we do that for cash flow purposes, that we ban the money to have the cash, expend it, and then get reimbursed for it.
And then we get reimbursed when we get the grant. Okay. So I'll be asking the board to approve the ban for that. And I thought there was one other thing that we have to do before the ban. No, I guess not.
Well, we're going to...
Confusing the projects.
How we go through Seeker before we... We have to do Seeker first.
Yeah, no, but I was thinking of something else. I'm confusing projects, I guess. But thank you for the...
Yes, you're welcome.
...presentation. And next, we have our comptroller, Mark Posniak. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Thanks for joining us. So one of the things that is important to me is quarterly, I get the Town Board financial updates on the town finances, and tonight, Mark is going to give us a little report on them. And would you like to start, Mark?
Sure. It's not much of a report this time. It's good to establish the practice, but in the first quarter, not too much has happened to take note of or to have discussion about, so it'll be fairly short unless you have...
Well, it'll dovetail us into the highway department, so...
That's right. So, and that's what I would bring attention to. First, the one line item to take note of is in the snow removal category, which is on the second page of the Highway Financial Statements, DA 5142. So the whole category of snow removal is within budget, but the line for snow materials is overspent by $34,000. So at the next board meeting, I'll ask for a budget transfer to accommodate that. I would also add that it's in our plans to purchase at least another 1,000 tons of salt in this calendar year, in this budget year. So that is approximately $75,000. So not only do we want to get it out of the negative, but we want it to be at least a positive $75,000 available budget. We have $153,000 in the snow removal line, so if we were to expend $75,000 on materials, that would leave us 75 for whatever may come the rest of this year. So November, December storms, we'd need to pay for that with the 75 unless we choose to allocate other funds. Additionally, and the highway superintendent will, I think, talk about this a little bit more, but there's an opportunity to purchase a vehicle for $40,000. We've already identified the capital purchases in the budget. We had budgeted $200,000. We've already, it's not all spent, but it's all...
Appropriated.
Appropriated already, basically. So it would be for your consideration to consider moving money into that line. And as I said, I'll let the highway superintendent do the justification, but we would consider moving some of the funds required from other highway lines, perhaps the tires line and some of the others. So that's details to be worked out. If you're in favor of this concept, then we'd find lines to move it from and potentially use a small amount of highway fund balance. Okay? But those were the only two things sort of that I take note of. With the financials, a lot of the revenue numbers, you will see they're either, like the tax numbers are, we've already hit 100% of our tax revenues. But for sales tax, you'll see that the recorded amount is $0. We're a quarter of the way through the year, but we haven't received any sales tax figures yet. They get collected by the state. The quarter the state uses would be December 2017, January, February of 2018. The money then filters down to the county, and then we get that quarter's payment in So there's a lag there. And I'll also note that the expense lines are a little bit more up to date, but there are items in, that March expenditures that haven't made their way through the financial software yet. We may not have received a bill or something. So these are accurate as of the date of the report, but there may be some additional March expenditures still unrecorded.
And a lot of this is closing out 2017 bills and whatnot?
The 2017 bills, yeah. We've closed out, and those were booked in the 2017 financial statements.
The last one.
That's right. So if we paid a bill in February that was for items purchased in 2017, they're not in these numbers. They would be in the 2017 numbers.
So why would we be over $34,000?
In snow materials?
Yeah.
There were a lot of storms, a lot of, I mean, again, I'll let the highway superintendent speak to that, but I think it was the nature of the storms, that there were a lot of small storms that we had to send people out. I mean, we read, we budgeted $450,000. Typically, you know, we spend in the neighborhood of $600,000 in salt, so... But it was also that we may have entered the year with slightly less in a...
So this is new salt we purchased already? Is that what you're saying?
This is new, this is salt that was purchased in 2018.
It's not salt we budgeted for. We budgeted for salt.
Yeah, this is budgeted.
Yeah.
But we're already over the budget by $30,000.
We're over the whole budget for the year for salt?
That's right.
That's right, for salt.
Yes.
We're not empty. Or...
Yeah. The salt sheds aren't empty.
Well, when Kenny comes up, he'll...
I'll also note, as I said, we haven't expended fully the snow removal budget. It's just that line within that department.
Right.
So we have $50,000 still available in our overtime line and $137,000 in our, so there was savings on those ends from management practices.
Mark, as far as the equipment, so we budgeted for $200,000?
That's right.
Kenny, you want to maybe set up?
Is it, how much have we spent so far? Is it $120,000?
Well, it's, there's a difference between what's out the door and what's already been committed to. So money out the, money booked and out the door is $14,055, but you can see the encumbrance of $138,000. So those are already purchase orders that have been entered into the system, but we haven't...
Received.
We haven't received them, so we haven't paid them yet, but... And then the remaining $47,000, we've already verbally made the commitments for the equipment, but we haven't received pricing, you know, the exact pricing.
Kenny, do you want to explain what we did purchase?
We've purchased three Dodge 550s, diesels, four-wheel drives, cabin chassis. And then we also purchased the Sanders and Plows to go with those trucks that we are going to install in-house. So we've saved quite a bit there. We have not received the trucks. We were supposed to get them in May. We might not see them now because of backorder till September.
So, so everybody knows, I went over to the highway garage to discuss about the purchases, and they explained to me how it works, that you order a truck, a snow plow with the plow and the sander on the back and everything like that, and they give it to you. And how much does a truck like that normally run? Already done?
Already done, you're probably in the area of $75,000 to $85,000.
So they purchased everything separate so that our men could do the...
Installs.
Put together, I guess, put together the pieces ourselves. So they're not too happy about that, the companies that we order from, because they make their money on the install. Is that right?
Correct.
So we could, our dollars go a little bit longer because we're saving the dollars in the installation. So go ahead, I'm sorry.
So we were supposed to receive them in May, but of course, you know, we are doing all our installs, so the company that we purchased from is not overly thrilled to supply the trucks right-of-way to us. That's why we are, we are now going to be getting them in September. That is where we're at with the three new Dodge 550 trucks.
And they're going to be replacing what?
Our older trucks, which are in the areas of 99s, 2000s, and a 2001. So we're upgrading our smaller fleet this year.
Can I just ask, are these PTO-operated Sanders or no?
They're electric.
Yeah. Say we can't put the computers on those.
Right. We're actually trying to get the smaller Sanders with the electric. It's a lot less maintenance than the pony motors, so...
And the larger truck that we're looking to purchase, trying to look at the budget lines to see if we could squeeze out another truck, you want to explain how that came about?
This came about through Town of LaGrange. They have a 10-year plan where they replace their truck, their bigger trucks, every 10 years. So Mike Kelly and I had spoke, and he said he was going to put one out to bid, possibly for around $50,000 to $55,000.
How much is a big truck like that new?
A big truck like that new is going to be over $225,000.
What size truck are we talking about?
It's a full-size, four-wheel-drive Mack truck with already the plow, the wing, and the sander, all together, already set up, ready to go to work.
How many miles are on that?
It's under $45,000, I believe. And he's actually redoing all the springs in the truck, and he did a lot of the fuel lines and brake lines prior to us buying it, if we go that route. I think it's a good way to go. It's a full-size truck, Mack truck. It's a full-size truck, Mack truck, and it would be something we could use in our mountains.
And we replace it with... How old are our trucks?
Some of our older, bigger trucks are in the areas of 91, 93s, and 94s. We would like to try to upgrade those trucks.
How many miles on those trucks?
They're in the areas between 85, 90,000 miles. Again, those are winter trucks, so they only get used for winter. This truck has a body where the sander, we can... There's a pan that goes down over the flight chain, so this truck could also be used all year long, not just for the wintertime. So, it could become something that we use in our fleet all year long, which I think is a good way to go. I think it's a smart move for us, and we'd be purchasing it off another town, so we know it's well-maintained.
So, they buy brand-new, we'll be buying the used one?
We'd be buying the 2008. We replace our 91.
Yeah, they replace all their vehicles every 10 years.
Every 10 years on the large trucks. Every seven years, they go on the smaller trucks.
But we have a larger fleet, and we have a larger town, yeah, so...
In the past, I think there was a discussion, I don't know if it was public, but have we ever thought about leasing these trucks?
I don't know if you can lease a large truck like that. We could probably lease a loader or something like that, but a snowplow truck, I have not seen anybody that leases those trucks out.
The modifications you'd have to do to them, too?
Exactly. And what they go through, the wear and tear, the salt. So, that I don't think is an option for us. If we wanted to lease a loader for the winter season, that is an option we could look into later. But currently, we have two loaders on our fleet. So, if one goes down in a snowstorm, we have a backup.
So, while we were discussing, the comptroller was discussing the snow budget. So, you want to give a little brief description on how we got into the, maybe, the salt situation and...
Well, when I took office, we were left with a sand shed that was less than half-full. So, I had to, right off... As soon as I came into office, I had to fill those sheds. So, right off the bat, we started with having to fill our sheds. And then, we had a winter where we were out quite a bit, especially on the mountains, even towards the end. Even in April, we've been out. So, we've used quite a bit of material. We still have quite a bit of salt in our shed, and we have maybe a quarter load of sand in the other shed. So, we do have material, and we do have surplus money from our other lines. So, we can save, like Mark and I had talked, and Nick, where we can set aside $75,000 towards purchase of more salt for this year, in case we get more storms come November, December of this year.
You know, we've been talking about salt, salt, salt for quite a few years. A few years back, we bought a lot of salt. We didn't know what to do with it. And then, last year, I don't know, we didn't buy any, or we bought very little?
I think it was 1,000 ton.
Right. I... You know, we've been discussing, and there's been suggestions, that I think the town board needs to have a better understanding of how much stuff we have available. I think Nick probably putting something on a computer, so that... Today, I was talking to Mark, and he has a hard time pinpointing exactly how much stuff we have in storage.
Like material, meaning?
Material, equipment.
Equipment? I did a full inventory of every single equipment in the town.
Right. Yes, we did.
I think we need to probably invest a little bit of money and have a database, so that when this information is upgraded as we go along, and that is available, so that we don't have to... We don't have to rely on some people to say, okay, we have this, we don't have that. But it's rather available to everybody when we want to access that information. In the past, we said, let's hold off. It's a little bit expensive to get this equipment, but I think it's time that we probably could invest some money, because, you know, we do need a better grip of, you know...
It's funny you mention that. I met with Dutchess County Share Services, and they do offer a program for our highway departments' software. And I didn't discuss that yet with the Highway Superintendent, but it could be advantageous for us to take a look at that.
Yeah, I'm open for that. But again, every winter is different, and every storm is different.
Oh, absolutely. It's a...
It's hard to decide exactly what we're going to use each winter, when some winters can be very mild. And like this winter, we had three big storms back-to-back. And those kind of storms, you're going to use a lot of material, especially with our mountain runs.
You know, no... No, I'm just going to say, you know, some people like to invest in something, some people, they're right away. That's a personal choice that you got to decide. But I think the board, at least as far as I'm concerned, I want to make sure that the money that we spend is spent properly.
Absolutely.
And again, dealing with the other Highway Superintendent, you know, he had a different feeling about certain things.
Sure.
So, I personally think we need this information. It needs to be out. We need it as a tool to better judge, you know, and plan...
Sure.
...the finances of the town.
We can...
Because, you know, you're the third Highway Superintendent since I've been elected. And, you know, as I said, it's an individual choice that you...
Sure.
...as a Superintendent decide, I need this, I need this, and I need this.
Correct.
Somebody else might decide, no. And again, I'm not... It's not up to me, but you know better than...
Right.
But I think that the town board does need, because when I asked Mark, Mark has to refer to you to get that information, so...
I can tell you, you know, like I said, with what I've sat down with Mark, I can tell you what we've spent this year, and I can tell you what we have in the shed by what we bring in, because all those loads are ticketed with their weights.
Right.
So, we have that way of judging it. But, like I said, each storm can be different. And I think it's a good move for us to go ahead and purchase the 2008 Mack truck from Town of La Grange, because you're getting a truck that, if we were to buy it new, you're talking $225,000. We're going to get this truck at $40,000. That's why I'm bringing it to your guys' attention.
Right, well, we have to... You know, when we sit down to do the budget, we're going to have to examine how much money we've been spending on repairs and other things that, you know, in the end, it costs us more to than to purchase something else. But I think it's a good idea, maybe we do look at something for... That would also aid you in running the Highway Department, some computer software. But obviously, no computer software can ever determine what the weather's going to be.
Exactly.
So, we try to make the best determined judgment that we can in our budgets and how much we've been spending on salt. And so, this year, we have... To date, we have over $150,000 that we haven't spent on contractors, which I appreciate you holding back on contractors and continuing what the previous Highway Superintendent was always doing. And, you know, I heard the complaints. They called. Some of the contractors complained that, you know, they weren't out there maybe early enough or late enough in getting the hours. But, you know, we have to be budget-conscious, so I appreciate that. I guess what we have to determine is paving is on our minds always, and where are we going to get money for more paving? Now, for the rest of the year, we only have $150,000 left in that budget line that we could utilize for extra paving, but the winter isn't over. We have November and December to worry about also. So, if we were to purchase some more salt, like Mark said, maybe 1,000. So, how much is the... Mark, you said that... Kenny, you provided him with an estimate on the bid for salt?
Yes.
Now, is that a bid that you got, or is that off the county bid?
That's off the county bid.
That's off the county bid. So, how much was that bid?
$75 per ton.
I'm sorry?
$75 per ton.
$75 per ton. So, how does that relate to, say, last year's bid? Is that up or down, or just generally?
Yeah, yeah. It's... So, I just went back and pulled a few vouchers to check the... So, we had some at 78 last year. In the past, we've had some as low as 65, but it's... The one I checked in 2017 was $78.
Okay, so it's a couple dollars less.
It's a couple dollars less.
Okay, so if we were to buy 1,000 tons of salt, you said we already have a good amount of salt, but not sand?
We do. We have a good amount of salt in the shed. Sand, we're down to about a quarter of a shed. So, if I was to purchase another 1,000 tons of salt, I could mix a decent amount up to fill our shed, our sand shed, probably three-quarters of the way up.
Okay.
Which will definitely, unless we have some kind of crazy...
November and December.
...November, December, we should be fine.
So, I guess, basically, we could discuss, the board, if we'd like to gamble with the other $75,000 and throw it towards more paving, and hope that we won't have such a tough November and December. And then, if we do, we will try to see then what we'll do with putting more dollars towards that budget, if we have to utilize fund balance or not, or we just keep it there and we hold steady.
Kenny, how much salt do we need from a whole season? How many tons?
It all varies.
I understand. Let's say we have a season like we had this year.
We would...
What is the total tonnage that we could use?
We probably would need...
Mark, you said something, 6,000 tons or something?
I think six to eight has been a typical...
Yes, that's normally what we would go through on a winter like we had, 6,000 to 8,000 tons.
So, maximum 8,000 tons?
8,500. But again, we are taking over more roads, so our road miles are also increasing, which definitely...
And when you came in, when you took that place over, how much do we have in storage?
We had about a half of a sand shed and maybe three-quarters of a salt shed.
So, you're saying that we had 4,000 tons?
We probably had about 5,000 tons of salt, maybe 3,000 of sand. And that's why we had to, right away, as soon as I took over, we had to rush to fill the sand shed, mix also. So, that mixing uses salt as well, because we have to mix the salt into the sand.
So, for the year, you would use, let's say, maximum 8,000 tons of salt and how much sand?
We've probably used altogether close to 8,500, somewhere in that area, between 65 and 8,500 tons, give or take.
And the sand, how much?
I'm including that in, the sand and the salt.
So, 8,000 tons includes sand and salt?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mixing the salt in the sand as well.
So, that's usually a season like we had?
That's usually a season like we have.
Oh, yeah.
If, you know, we've had worse. Since I've been at the Highway 19 years, I've seen it where it's been worse.
Right.
We were using a lot more.
So, what we have now on hand, and if we were to purchase another 1,000 tons, historically, if you had to guess...
I'd say we could...
Write out 2018?
We should be able to make it. I feel like we should be able to make it.
Yeah, but you want to start the year, at the end of the year, with a full shed?
Well, right. Or we go right, like we did this year, and as soon as the new budget comes in, we fill them up again.
I think, Mark and I were discussing this, like Councilman Marinaro said, when we had a lot of salt, and then we didn't buy, then we used those dollars towards the paving. It seemed like then we got a little behind somewhere, where usually, you're trying to use, we would love to have $20, $18, fill our sheds for 2019, and we're working full. But it seems like we're working with half-full stuff and then using the current dollars to fill, so...
Correct.
It's, yeah, I guess it's a guesstimate, and it's hard to determine, but...
Well, the other issue with not having the money on hand is because we had some kind of a loan at that department, right, Mark?
Not really. So, I mean, there was a delay with our CHIPS money. And I think this is what, you know, where we had budgeted and been awarded about $350,000, but it took several years to actually realize those funds. So, in the interim, you know, there was, from a cash flow perspective, money being advanced. But it's not really a loan in the sense that it's money being temporarily used by one fund that gets paid back essentially immediately, and it's the same tax base, so there's no issue of... It's not uncommon to have a due-to, due-from, is what we'd call it.
And the CHIPS money, we usually get every year, or...
We usually get every year, but for a period, there was a delay where we didn't get it every year, and then we received it all, you know, three years' worth all at once.
So, the due-to, when the money came, we went back to the due-to?
Yeah. It was... We were recording the revenue throughout, so it was always highway fund money.
So, we use...
It's a cash flow issue.
Okay, so we use the cash flow on hand?
We had the money, but we were the revenue, but we didn't have the cash, so...
Right. So, when you knew you were getting it, you booked it right back to the highway?
Right.
So, with the 1,000 now, you would be back, how many tonnage through December?
Through December, it's kind of hard to tell the tonnage, because now that the sheds are where they are, I can tell you what we've used, but what we have in there, it's kind of a guesstimation, because it's all stockpiled in there, and it's mounted very high. It's kind of hard to guesstimate what we have in there.
But isn't something you got to buy today, anyway?
No, it's not something we got to buy. That's why we're talking about it now, let everybody...
You wouldn't have to look at it until August, really.
You know? Right, exactly. So...
So, what we do have to spend, though, right now, is paving money.
Exactly.
So, what's your thoughts?
I think, like you and I and Mark had spoke, that we should take the extra 75 that we have, and let's roll that into our paving.
Well, I think we should discuss that, because that's a gamble.
It's a gamble.
It's a gamble.
That's why we're here tonight. What do we want to do? What do we want to do?
Exactly. That's tough.
You know, it's something that we need to all think about, which way we want to go. Do we roll the dice, you know, or do we...
So, we got how much for paving, 600?
Yeah, there's 600 for paving and an additional 100 for major drainage.
Drainage, right. Okay, so you have... You're all set with your lists of what you want to pave?
Yes.
So, maybe you could provide the town board with that?
Yes.
And so, what's the process now? We go out for bid, right?
Yes.
And we go off...
Out for bid, or we piggyback to county?
If we piggyback to county, we go with, I believe, Peckham was awarded that bid. So, if we piggyback to county.
So, what's the advantage if we... Would we go after, do our own bid, or what's our...
Well, it's a lot simpler. I mean, as far as having to put a project out ourselves, you just identify the roads, and they come pave it. The unit price is their own place.
The county bid.
The county bid. I mean, if we... We used to do it ourselves, and then we got away from that, because it's a lot of time to put a package together.
Right.
And we do have a fair amount of projects going on right now.
Right, right, okay.
My vote would be to piggyback.
Well, obviously, the county does this, so it saves us time and money, so...
And you probably get a better price.
And they get a better price, obviously, per ton.
Bigger bid.
Right, bigger bid. Okay, so if you're going to, you know, discuss your roads and what you want done and...
Correct.
Okay. So, when can you provide that to the town, so the board, so we could just take a... I mean, it's your roads, you obviously pick what you want.
I've been discussing some of it with Peter, and, you know, we have a lot of roads that are in bad shape. that are in bad shape. Some are worse than others and those are the ones we'd like to start with. And we'll take it from there, you know?
I mean, I'd say do what you've basically got on the list.
Right.
And don't worry about that $75,000 until we get to.
To that point.
August.
Right. And then we can always add and say.
We can always add or subtract at that point.
And obviously, we'll realize if other revenues are increased, if sales taxes, you know, today in the paper, I saw that the homes are very, is the hottest home market in, you know, 10 years. So hopefully.
Mortgage taxes.
Mortgage taxes and maybe something else, maybe we can do some more paving dollars. It would be, that would be great.
That'd be great.
That would be great. What's the board feel?
When do you usually get that information as far as that money?
Well, so the mortgage taxes, we get paid twice a year. Once for March through September and the other is October, or April through September and then October through March. But we do get a monthly report. So even though we haven't received the check, we do have a better sense, unlike sales tax, every month we do get a monthly mortgage tax report. So we would have a decent idea probably in August or so of where we're headed, but mortgage taxes are also very finicky, you know? We can see them going up and down month to month, there's not always a consistent pattern. But we'll know more, for sure.
So you didn't get a figure yet as far as how much we're going to be getting for March?
March was a good month, so I think it was over $100,000 for just March in mortgage taxes, but the prior two months were closer to $60,000.
Where should we be?
We need to be around 82,000 to, that's what we're targeting with our budget.
With our budget, right.
So we're right on, but those three would be about 8,000.
We're pretty close to, yeah, yeah, pretty close.
Any other thoughts about paving, anything?
I agree with Peter. I think we should go forward with the $600,000 and we'll decide in August.
Unless you want to split tens against an eight.
I'll never challenge the deputy supervisor.
So that's where we're, we're at and, you know, a couple things to think about.
Okay, so how about, how, how'd we fare with repairs with vehicles over the winter?
This year, we, you know, we did have quite a few repairs because we were out plowing quite a bit. Mark had some of that, I believe.
So the total repair lines, the winter repairs, we had a budget of 80,000 and we spent 46,800. So again, the winter is, the calendar year is January through December, but, so it's a little awkward there, but I would say, again, we'd expect November, December to be lighter than.
Correct.
January through April.
Usually it is. Usually it is.
Oh, knock on wood.
So we're, we're good there, we're under budget with our repairs, but again, our fleet is getting older.
Right.
You're not changing many tires, I see.
Well, the winter trucks, they only go out in the winter, so they don't get as much wear and tear as our everyday trucks, those tires and stuff. Those tires don't get changed nearly as often as our everyday 10-wheelers and smaller, smaller trucks, our smaller fleet, like our 350s, our 550s.
I know that we had a discussion in the past with the previous highway superintendent, he liked the idea to buy trucks that could be used all season rather than just in the winter, so.
Correct, correct, that's why.
Probably.
We're getting away from the gondola sanders and we're going to the truck body sanders. This Mack truck is not a gondola, it's a truck body sander, which is a truck we could use all year long.
Right.
Okay, anybody else?
Thank you.
Deputy? Okay, Mark, Kenny, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Ken.
So we'll be discussing more paving for the future, see if we can add to the budget. And with that, now I have an open discussion on the agenda. Anybody like to discuss? Anything on your mind?
Give a report on the.
Sure, any reports you want to give or comments, anything you want to talk about.
Go ahead, you ready?
Sure.
Go ahead.
He could go last.
For Recreation, I want to thank all the leagues by being patient. Butch Kidney and his staff have been doing a great job. Kenny also has been helping out a lot, we really appreciate that. We had to push opening day back a week because of the poor weather in April, but this week everything should be back up, so we're very happy about that, all the fields are open. We're very happy to announce that we're going to be having our second annual Red Wing Think Differently Day at the beach on Sunday, July 25th, which is a day for people of all abilities at our beach. Last year was a tremendous success. We're really looking forward to doing it again this year. And I want to thank again Highway Superintendent Kenny Williams for all his help with the Rec Department. We took a little tour of Red Wing the other day to see what the needs there, you know that there's going to be needs in paving eventually in that facility.
Yeah.
But everything is going good so far. And again, thanks again to Butch and his people, they're doing a great job.
Excellent.
Well, first I'd like to thank Chief Keith and also Jan from the Rec Department for having me over the past few weeks. I'm fortunate that I had a chance to meet with a lot of the department heads during this time. I think we talked about the opiate forum and also I'd like to commend you in your work with CAPE. And part of my efforts is I'd like to see a committee created in the town, which I would bring up to the supervisor and we'll, we'll talk about that in further detail. Something that, that would be open to the parents and to continue on what we, what we had here with the forum. So I'll be working on that over the coming weeks. But I'd like to thank Supervisor Delisandro and Gina for bringing me up to speed over the past few weeks. It's been intensive, but it's, it's been a good time. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilman Marinaro?
Basically, not into the report. Just want to say that if I may suggest for next year, for when we do Cleanup Day, I think we should have a list of places that we should assign the volunteers. There is a road right in town here behind, when you go to Trinker Lane. It's extremely dirty. I think I'm going to take a Saturday, if any volunteers, we need to clean up that street. It's really a mess. I don't know if we missed it or somebody didn't go that way.
The one guy that usually does that was here, he was by himself this year, though, Rich, Uelli.
Okay, but.
We were, in certain areas, we were down in volunteers. We actually had probably the norm for number-wise, I'll talk about that when it comes up, but the number of volunteers is drastically different types. A lot of them are coming in and they want to do their own area. And I don't want to say you brought in your group, you can't go do your road.
Right. Well, we, we did miss this road. Do you want to go out with me and we clean it up Saturday morning?
I'll go out with you, Manny. I'm going Saturday, but I will go out with you.
Yeah, we need to clean it up, I mean.
I, I agree, there's tons of roads and I, a lot of the problem is we're doing it too early in the year, but that's basically because of one group in town called Recreation. And nobody wants to take away from a year or a day of playing on the fields. And a lot of the volunteers that come in from baseball, they go over to the baseball fields. And all the soccer people that come in that day, they all go to the soccer fields.
That's not necessarily true.
Well, no, a lot of it, if you go through the groups that were there, and then the big groups that go out were a lot of us that came here and the police department. Thank God for the police department. Because if it wasn't them, I'll bet you they took eight truckloads off just the area that they do every year.
Like seven.
You know, seven, they only get seven?
But I, yeah, probably, I don't know, you know, but you're probably right, but I think that next year, we should kind of keep an eye on the roads.
Specifically.
This road over here, you drive by it, I drove by it and I was shocked, this is, somebody missed this road. So it's right in the smack of town, people drive by there, there's a lot of.
I mean, we had a lot of volunteers, but.
We had a lot of volunteers.
It would love to get more, it would love to get more. I think if we moved it back a little.
If we moved it further away, you mean?
More warmer, yes. I think we would do much better.
But the problem, the problem's going to be, is Recreation.
Have you ever tried moving yet? Did you have a problem or you think you might have a problem?
The people that usually pick this date always, have always picked the date for the last 10, 15 years.
Is you, right?
Yeah, it's Recreation.
Oh. You're encouraging that, you should change it.
Recreation picks it because it has to be at least a week before opening day.
We suspend some games, I mean, I don't know how.
You go bring that up.
You tell the kids that.
You tell me no about my thing during, you bring that one up.
If we got to do, if we got to do cleanup.
There are laws during the season.
You tell the kids that.
Actually, it should probably, Cleanup Day should probably.
We can do it inside of a Community Day because we don't have anything going on on Community Day when it comes to.
I think that's a little late. I think the beginning of the season is the best time after the winter.
You're probably looking more towards the middle of April.
Well, I got a volunteer, we'll, we'll clean up that piece of road over there.
No, you can do a couple days.
Yes, Councilman Marinaro and Councilman Beben are going to do the whole town with every weekend.
We're going to use your truck, we're going to use your truck, though, we're going to use your truck.
Just put gas in it.
We're going to use your truck.
Okay, I'll give you the week you can use it too because I'm on the town.
He's going to pay for the gas, too.
I, I just want to, just want to make, just want to make another comment, it's kind of personal. Many people in the town have been contacting me, asking me about my health. There's nothing wrong with my health, thank God, thank you for your concern. I've been just doing a personal diet, lost a lot of weight, so I, I want to reassure everybody that everything is okay. Thank you.
You two hanging out together? I took your pounds, so.
I found him, I found him, Manny.
I don't want him back.
Deputy?
I noticed that there was no meals in any of your meetings this week.
You say that?
I noticed that. All the damage from the downed trees that have, from all the snowstorms that are on the sides of the roads have been cleaned up. Brush cleanup is not being run by the town. If it's your brush, you keep it. And the brush drop-off, I don't know whether we're going to be doing another one in another month or two in spring or?
June and?
June and July.
June, no.
June.
June and October.
The sweepings, the sweepers have already been out. They started Hillside Lake and that area is done, they're moving towards town and they're probably over towards Brown Road and Lake Walton today. Patchwork started, started a little late this year because of all the snow. The roads to be paved in the plan this year, East Hook Cross Road, Nanook and Glen Ridge, that should basically be what we're hoping to get done. And then after that, we'll find out if there's any more money and go on from there. The VAC truck, it should start cleaning the catch basins next week on April 16th in the Hillside Lake. And as far as Recreation, all the vehicles and everything, all the lawn mowers and everything are finally serviced for the first time in probably two to three years, some of them, but it's all looking good. The parking garage, the new garage for all the town of East Fishkill, the bay has been finished for the police department, Recreation, town hall vehicles and stuff like that. Hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll be cleaning up the rest of the Route 52 Park and Ride. Park and Ride will be shut down, there'll be a sign going up for a couple of days to clear cut that, to keep the brush, the garbage down from there. And once again, Cleanup Day, volunteers were great. Councilman Marinaro is probably right, we could use another day or two and if we could work it out with Recreation and find a lull, it'd be great to settle, set up another day.